All right, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and we're going to begin the special town meeting. All right, so Town of Acton warrant to Robert Anderson, a citizen of the Town of Acton. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn inhabitants of said Town of Acton qualified to vote for Town Affairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on April 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM to vote on the following articles. The clerk received verification that the special town meeting posting was completed on April 10th. The constable of the Town of Acton has sworn and affirmed he has posted in the following locations a minimum of seven days before the meeting. The Acton Town Hall, the Acton Post Office, Milton Mills Post Office, Acton Transfer Station, Acton Trading Post, and Acton Elementary School. Article one, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Nominations are now open.
I'll make Richard Nass.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Seeing as there are no more nominations, we will close the nomination process. Would anybody else like to vote? No. All right, Richard Nass, you have been elected as moderator. Can you please come up and take your oath? You, after me. I, Richard Nass.
Hi, Richard Nass.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And of this state as long.
And of this state.
As long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
I, Richard Nass.
I, Richard Nass.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge.
Do swear that it will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As the Town of Acton elected moderator.
As the Town of Acton elected moderator.
For that Town of Acton Special Town Meeting.
For the Town of Acton Special Town Meeting.
On April 19th, 2023.
On April 19th, 2023.
According to the Constitution and the law of the state of Maine.
According to the Constitution and the law of the state of Maine.
Thank you.
That's it.
There are seats up front if anyone's looking.
Thank you. God, what a great turnout. Welcome, everybody. We just got things going with Kayla, in case anybody doesn't know, is going over to Shapley in June to be the town clerk over there. She's deputy here. Great job. So, let's do some preliminaries here, the usual. If we could stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. The flag is here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So unless there's objections, we'll, as we usually do, be guided by the main moderator's manual, which is a fairly simple parliamentary procedure manual. So I have that and that's what we'll follow, the rules of that, unless there's objection. Seeing none. We do have some non-residents who may be required to speak or may want to speak. We have Kayla, who's our assistant town clerk. We have our treasurer, Kelsey Burgess. Is Kelsey here?
Kelly.
Kelly? I'm sorry, Kelly?
Yep.
Hi, Kelly. And Jennifer Root, of course. Okay. So again, if there's no objections, we'll allow them to speak if it's required. Hearing none, we're set on that. Okay. Finally, everybody should, who's a registered voter, should have a blue card. When it comes time to vote, this is your ticket to voting, okay? You need to hold it up. Whether it's yes or no, this is the ticket, okay? Any questions? If you have desire to make a comment or have questions, that's the microphone over there that you can stand at and so we can all hear and we can participate if you want to. Okay. Item, Article two. The city town will authorize the select board to invest town funds per the Town of Acton's investment policy. Select board recommends to approve the article as written. Three to zero. Motion passed. Warrant committee did not pass that motion. Is there a motion on Article two? Dennis?
I'd make a motion to approve the article as written.
To approve the article as written. Is there a second?
Second.
The move in second is to approve Article two as written. Are there questions or comments on Article two?
I'd like to make some comments.
Tom, yes.
Thank you.
You guys in the back have to yell at me if you want to.
I'll make myself know.
Okay, thank you.
Great to see everyone here tonight. I'm Tom McGurty, a select board member. And I have some material that I'd like to share with you today. Just to give you a background, I'll actually talk about the investment article as well as the appointment of a new accounting firm. Before I get to this, actually, there was a, there's a packet that was handed out here. The audit normally is done October and November. Our fiscal year ends June 30th. And it normally takes them three or four months to do the audit. This year, we received the audit on April 13th. There, our audit firm, R. H. Smith, who has been our auditor for more than 10 years, I believe, is like many firms in Maine and elsewhere, they're having a difficult time recruiting people. And they just, they have a large number of towns like Acton that they do, and we simply just couldn't get in their queue fast enough. The consequence of that is the town is required to submit its annual financial audit to the state and, most importantly, to the Department of Education. And that report was due December 31st. So we had to file extensions and we did two, I believe, additional extensions. The last one was set to expire April 15th and we had basically two days to file the report. Had we not filed that, I'm not sure that we could have gotten another extension. And what it would have meant is payments by the state Department of Education for funding at the school would have been suspended. We wouldn't necessarily have lost them, but we would not have been able to bill and receive any future payments until the matter was resolved. So it's a, it's a very important issue. The other thing about the audit is our audit is currently prepare our financial statements. The town has never had the ability to, or at least in recent years, the ability to actually prepare a set of financials. So here we are, we're starting a budget process, actually in December or January, and we did not know how we ended the prior fiscal year, which is not a good position to be in, obviously. So, but in the case of R. H. Smith, they actually prepare the financial statements and they audit them. That's, I'll say that's an unusual sort of working relationship. Typically, you have either management or a firm prepare the statements and the audit is audit them. Acton is not alone in that regard. Many towns do that. But it's, it's an issue because the accounting profession really doesn't allow that to happen. So, but it's in fact a practice here in Maine. So this material was something that I pulled together from the audit. The audit is 100 pages. It's, it's a, I'll say, as someone who's familiar with reading financial statements, it's a complicated document. And it takes quite a bit for, I think, anyone who's not familiar with it to really go through and figure out what they need to know to understand what the town's financial position is. So I prepared the summary for you and there's a couple of points here that I wanted to make.
Tom, can I interrupt? Are we talking about Article three or Article two?
This sets up for both of them.
Okay.
All right? This is a prelude for both of them.
We're wandering a little bit outside of what Article two talks about.
Well, if you bear with me, I'll show the relevance.
Nobody objects, we're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. The first thing is called a balance sheet. And we have cash of $6 million for the town. That includes cash that is held for the general government of the town as well as cash that the school may have sort of an interest in or title to. So $6 million is sitting in, basically, it's invested today. That's what we're talking about with Article two, how to invest that money. This schedule, these schedules also have other information that I think if you're interested, how the, how the town performed against budget, you'll be able to see that. Basically, the town had an $850,000 surplus in our fiscal year '22. So it's a pretty significant level of service in this surplus and there are schedules there that can go department by department exactly how that was generated. So Article two has already been discussed. That page, we can move on. The, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Could you advance that, please? Thank you. The proposal is to incorporate the new investment policy that was adopted by the select board and into our approach for investing that cash. This next slide is the actual investment policy. I'm not going to go through this, but suffice it to say that we invest in basically things that are invested, that are backed by the U.S. Treasury. We don't go outside of that. If the money's in a bank, it's FDIC insured. But if it's other kinds of investments, which we're going to be talking about in a moment, they will all be backed by the U.S. Government. And, you know, in the industry, treasury, bonds or notes, that's the standard for what they call it, risk rate, a risk-free investment. It's an investment you can, that you can make that, in theory, has no risk because it's not, not, I can't think of a better credit than the U.S. Government. So, let's move on to the next one. Still, I still cannot think of a better one. All right. The investment objectives. This is what's going to guide what we do. Preservation of principal. We don't want to lose any of our principal, so we don't invest in securities that will have a risk of loss. Liquidity. We want to ensure that we have access to the, to, for, to our cash to pay our bills. Credit quality. Only invest in the highest quality securities that are backed by the U.S. Government. And then, once those three are met, you want to generate the highest return that you can. This next chart, these, this was actually put together about a month ago, but it's still pretty accurate. Just to show you the kinds of, kinds of investments that can be made. You have savings accounts, if you will, and, you know, today you might get 1% or 2% in a savings account. I don't think you'll get much more than that, but perhaps you'll find something. CDs, they're bouncing around right now. When I did this, I think there were three. You can get CDs up to 5% today, but I don't think, those are limited to $250,000. And so when you're dealing with a $6 million portfolio, that has a limited sort of utility to it. Treasury bills, this is the area that we really want to focus on. These are securities that are backed by the U.S. Government and currently those are paying around 5%. And treasury bills have a maximum maturity of one year. We're kind of focusing between that 30, one month and six month timeframe. This is actually, when you go out much further than that, the rates go down. So at the moment, one month to six months, but that could change. Bonds, you're going to get a higher interest rate, but as interest rates move around generally in the market, you can lose money on bonds. And that's what that red bar is there to indicate. We will not be investing in bonds. And those would be corporate bonds, even treasury bonds, you can, you can lose money at. And stocks, of course, you can generate an even higher return, but you can generate a higher loss as well. So those final two are sort of off the table. We're not going near those. So this next slide indicates that they are backed by the U.S. Government. They are the safest investment that I think is available. And basically, the way they work is they can have a maturity of anywhere from one week to 52 weeks. And you buy them at a discount. And if you get a, if the bond has a 5% and you want to buy a $1,000 bond, basically it costs you $950, but when it matures, you get $1,000. So you're going to get that interest at the end. It's going to be embedded in the amount that you receive when it's sold. We're going to use a laddered portfolio. I don't want to get too technical, but all that really means is we're not going to put all our money into one security with a six-month date on it. We're going to, in all likelihood, select maybe six securities, one month, two months, three months, four months. And so they will mature. And so the two month, the one month will eventually mature and we'll cash that in. The two months will have a one-month maturity and so on. And we're likely, when that, when we cash in that one month, when it finally matures, we'll buy a six-month. So we'll just keep rolling that over. So we'll always have access to cash within 30 days. Did something get knocked off here?
Oh, that's the last one.
Last line, okay. So the objective here is to allow the select board to move forward with the investment policy that it has adopted and, and begin to invest these funds. As I say, right now, we're earning, well, when I started this two months ago, that $6 million was invested earning one-half of a percent. When we began to look into it, the bank raised it to one and a half because we, you know, indicated, you know, you're likely going to lose this money. And more recently, they've raised it to 2%, but that's still 3% below what a treasury can earn. On $6 million, that's $180,000 a year, which is a pretty significant revenue item. So I think I'd be happy to take any questions or...
Are there questions or comments on Article two? The motion on Article two is to adopt the article as written. Thanks, Tom. If you could tell us who you are.
Ray Lopez. I made a suggestion to the selectmen. If you guys look at the meetings, and I, in a sense, I agree with them, but the excess cash that they have of $6 million is quite a bit of money. In today's day and time of everything that's going on, I made the suggestion that half of that money be returned back to the taxpayer and the other half of the money be invested in the area that they're talking about. That way I can, I can see both worlds being happy, in an essence. So from that aspect, that was my suggestion to them. Hopefully, you guys will see it the same way.
Other questions or comments on Article two? Leslie. Leslie, you're going to tell us who you are because we have a new clerk here today. Thank you.
Leslie Berlin. I am, I'm actually on warrant finance and I voted against this warrant for the simple fact that it's not that I disagree that we should be investing the money. I have, my, my issue is that we need a plan for what to do with this excess money. And I understand it's going to take some time to develop that plan, but I haven't, I haven't really heard a commitment from all three selectmen that that's going to happen in a timely fashion. I also think that we have a budgeting process that's gone awry for us to accumulate this much money in excess funds. So, and that's the reason why I voted against this, because we need to know as townspeople and taxpayers that this is not going to continue to happen and that this money is going to be put to use for the benefit of the whole town. I mean, we have a huge inflation rate right now, people are hurting, and we're being overtaxed.
Other questions or comments on Article two?
Richard, do I have to go up there and speak for me?
You can go there. You have a mic.
I'll make a couple of comments to that. You know, and I understand we've, you know, we've gone over this a couple of times and the select board, we've discussed this over and over and, you know, I think Tom and I made kind of a concession there that, you know, I, I do believe, and Kim, that, you know, we do, we know there's going to be some tax relief here. We, we have to drop the tax rate right now with the new assessment and all that. We're working on that. We know right now, you know, we've been keeping the tax rate, you know, flatline for the last four years.
I think so.
Anyway, it's four years, okay? You know, because, you know, like myself, I've got this theory that, you know, I'd rather stay flatline and we're running budget, we're running, we're good, but, you know, we don't want to drop it, then raise it back up and fluctuate back and forth, like be consistent. But this, you know, this right here, you know, yeah, we're going to have to do some adjustments to the tax rate with all this money that we have. No, you know, I don't think anybody thinks we're going to take the whole thing and just throw it in an investment. We're going to, you know, we're going to look at the best way of, you know, making the taxpayer get their tax relief and we plan on doing that. The tax point, you know, the plan, how we're going to spend that money? Well, we discussed it, you know, at meetings and, you know, our departments, because, you know, we don't want to feed and friends either, okay? You know, if someone, if there's a bunch of money out there, you know, before you know it, you know, departments, we want this, this, that, we want a plan from these departments. You know, we know we've got roads, the fire department, transfer station, you know, the schools and everybody else, you know? You know, we want everybody to be treated fairly, but we all want a plan. So what we're going to have to do is when we figure out exactly what we want to spend on investment, what we want to spend on tax break, and, and put up some money aside and say, okay, we're going to, we're going to divvy this up and start doing some capital improvements to all these departments, but we want, we, they got to come to us with a plan and why they need it and, you know, the urgency. And that's why I want to roll with it. But there will be some tax relief, I believe.
Definitely.
If I could just say, how we invest it versus what we do with it are two separate issues. We, we are not going to spend this in the next six months. That would be my guess. Maybe we will, but I wouldn't think so. I think we need to take some time as a town to figure out, since we have this great problem, what do we do with it? But in the interim, we ought to make sure that we can, so long as we can make sure we don't lose any money, maximize the return and generate as much income as possible in safe investment. So two separate issues from my regard. Let's, let's get it invested and then we can talk about what do we do with it if it's too much.
Other questions or comments on Article two?
My name is Barbara Lann and my question is, there's a policy in place for the undesignated fund, am I correct? I mean, you, you posted that, right, Tom? And I'm curious to know, are we, are we going to, first of all, it looks like it needs to be updated. And second of all, are we going to try to follow that? I mean, considering it's our policy? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, are we going to follow that policy?
The question is raised. Anybody can answer the question. It sounded like somebody else was talking, that's what I...
They were.
Okay.
Dave's wife.
From my regard, it's a policy and, and we're obligated to follow it until we change it. So, yes, from my regard.
It has to be, you know, worked on.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know why we haven't been following that policy then, I guess.
You raised the question. Can anyone answer the question? Why haven't we been following the policy? No answers.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on Article two? Please identify yourself.
I'm Lee Robichor, resident of Acton. And I think Tom's comments are spot on. These are two separate issues. The investment policy is one and what to do with the funds is a different one. I think it's very important to give credit to the Board of Selectmen for identifying issues that the town has and, in a methodical way, addressing them. It's hard to put a budget together if you don't have financial statements. And so they are addressing that issue. And tied to that is putting a financial plan together to understand what the needs are for the town, best interest for all citizens of the town. And that includes capital reserves, it includes improvements to the town's infrastructure, and that takes time. And the investment policy will be updated and will help to maximize the return on the unused or excess funds, but it's not a long-term solution. But I think what the Board of Selectmen have done in, at least the recent years that I've been a resident of Acton, has addressed some of the flaws of the past and are making much needed progress towards where the town should be to allow it to manage their funds in a professional way. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on Article two? Yes, sir. Good. Please identify yourself.
My name's Phil Caruso. I was, I am on the Warrant Finance Committee and I voted no as well. And it's obvious that earning the best yield, everybody does that, right? I mean, that's a no-brainer, that part. There's a few concerns, and I understand we call this type of investment risk-free, treasury bills, and in the past, I would agree. So I don't believe that they're, they're risk-free anymore. They're probably the, one of the safest, but I would not call them risk-free anymore. As far as them being separate issues, they are technically, but this problem of excess cash has been around a long time and it keeps growing. There's a history to this. It's, it's no, no person's fault, but it hasn't been addressed. And I know you guys are talking about doing that. My concern, from a human nature standpoint, is you start making $180,000, that kind of becomes a priority instead of finishing this plan on doing something with the money, meaning some of it coming back to taxpayers or changing the mill rate or whatever's going to happen. Not that that will happen, but it is a possibility. When you're making that much money, you lose sight of making the plan because it has, this has been going on a long time. So I agree, if you're going to invest money, it's the best thing is get the highest yield and a savings account isn't doing very well. But another option, and of course, you're looking at FDIC on CDs and such. We all know that the FDIC has about 2% of the funds they need to cover losses. So unless you're the first one at the bank, you're going to wind up with nothing. That's a fact. And then as far as an additional investment, if you're looking at FDIC coverage, maybe CDs, you might earn a little less. Of course, with that much money, you can negotiate. I've done it personally, not that I have that much money. But I was thinking about possibly looking at investing that in, in the local community, meaning local banks that aren't part of some huge corporation, because then that money's being loaned out to people that live here. And it's still covered by the same FDIC. Just an idea, so I think those are my main points.
If I could just make a comment about the FDIC.
Tom, go ahead, please.
If I could make a comment about the FDIC. You're right. I think their, their coverage, their reserve coverage of deposits throughout the country is about 2%. Well, guess who backs up the FDIC? It's the U.S. Treasury. So it all comes back, whether it's a checking account, a savings account, a CD, all insured by FDIC up to $250,000, or treasury bills or bonds, they're all backed by the U.S. Government. So they all, they all carry a similar risk profile, if you will. They have a similar risk capability to them.
Are there other questions or comments on Article two? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Let's go here first, and then we'll go to you, okay?
But actually, Acton resident, I would suggest the gentleman's comment, get a commitment from the Select Board to have a plan ready. Get a date commitment from you guys. Then there is no question as to whether you're working on it or not. You know, make it simple. Just commit to a timetable that you will have it ready, and that's about all you need.
Well, I believe that will probably end up happening.
That's a suggestion, so other comments? David, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much, if we, when we set our new tax rate, and I believe we're August.
August.
August, yeah. You know, at that point there, you know, we have to have a plan.
Right.
Because we don't want to do, like I was talking...
Their commitments concerns, you can wipe that out basically by committing that we will do it at a certain time.
You know, like I said earlier, that what we've got to do is we've got to look at our tax rate, obviously.
That's the first thing we have to do.
We're overtaxing.
Right.
So we've got to...
Okay, we're not having a conversation here. Make your statements.
Okay. I speak for the board, not...
I'll give you my commitment that we will have a plan.
Yeah.
That's good.
Mine too. Yes, absolutely.
Additional comments or questions on Article 2?
I guess.
Yes, sir. You're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Rideout, and I'm on the Capital Improvement Committee. I would say to the Selectmen, the Board, that we have plans in place already for, you know, the transfer station. We've talked to each department as far as their different requests, the needs. We were just waiting on budget numbers and, but there's a lot of things that we could do with that money, and instead of borrowing money, I believe we're, the town of Acton's in a great position, especially with the interest rates the way that they are. But we could do a lot of good in our community for the fire department, for the library, for the wastewater treatment, not the wastewater treatment, excuse me, the transfer station. Maybe we could build the wastewater treatment. If you guys are interested in that. But yeah, we do have plans, and we've had several meetings, and we seem to be talking about the same things over and over again without action. So it's somewhat frustrating, but if we could, I know we have money in our budget, and we just had the engineering report for, you know, remodeling the town hall, bringing things up to 80-acre, you know, compatibility. These are all important things for public safety as well as, you know, for the community itself. So we're ready to go. We just need the green light to start making some of these things happen, and we won't even come close to spending $6 million, so just want to let you know that.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on Article 2? Judy?
Judy Shane, School Committee. I just, I'm concerned as to how this is going to affect any of the school funds. We do have some committed reserve funds that we can draw on any time that we have emergencies in need. I'm just wondering if this is going to affect any of the handling of the school funds.
That's a question. Judy's asking a question, I think.
I think, as I understand it, and I know this, the school has its own surplus policy, and that's independent of the town's surplus policy. What we're talking about is a set aside for the school and its reserve needs, and therefore that reserve is actual cash, so that would be set aside and preserved for the school. Nothing that I could think of that we would do that would impact that.
We have, we have no intentions of what we're talking about.
What we have here is the town.
All right, we got, we got a problem here. It looks like the people in the back can't hear the mics up here. Tom, is that what we're...
My hearing's worse than I thought.
Okay.
We'll speak into the mic.
We'll try to get the mics in the right place here.
I just know that from a school point, point of view, each year at the end of our budgeting season, we look at our undesignated account, what we have in our under designated funds, and we always try to turn a portion of that back to the town for tax relief purposes. And over the past three years, because of the, because of the excess money that we got through the COVID thing, we've turned back about $1 million to the town for tax relief. So I would be happy to see some of that money that the schools turn back, go back to some of the taxpayers. And as long as our funds are all set, I'm good.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on Article 2? Seeing on the motion is to adopt Article 2 as written. I'm going to hold up your blue cards if you're in favor of the motion. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed, Article 2 is adopted as written. Article 3, to see if the town will appropriate $65,000 in the unassigned fund balances, which appropriation shall carry over to fiscal year 2023-24 and authorize the Select Board to expend said funds during fiscal year 2023-24 to engage a certified public accountant services of Barry Talbot and Royer. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, can I make a motion if we approve the financing of any recommendations?
The recommendation is to adopt the article as written. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 3 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 3?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could I make some preliminary remarks?
Absolutely. Hang on.
Do you mind?
Yep.
You can see I love PowerPoint presentations, so I'll try to keep this brief. I've already talked about what happened this past year with the auditor. I got to tell you, that's a situation that I think we just need to avoid. As I look forward to the coming year, and I think about how we're going to get through another year with an audit, we've gone through two RFP processes, one that I went through and the Select Board did another one previous to that, trying to find an alternative to RH Smith. They do a fine job, but you've had the same auditor for over 10 years. That's not a good situation for anyone to have. I personally ended up calling about 15 or 20 firms, trying to get them to submit a bid. A whole variety of reasons. Number one, they couldn't get any help, they didn't want to submit a bid. Some of them couldn't get insurance because of the way the town needed them to prepare financial statements and audit them. Some insurance companies won't insure them because that's something you really shouldn't be doing. RH Smith does many small towns throughout the state. I believe they have over 100 clients, and as the labor force becomes tighter and tighter, I'm concerned that, quite frankly, they could end up dropping clients. I've heard some have already been dropped. If I can't find, if we can't find an alternative firm to do it, next year around this time, we could be in a similar situation without a solution and not have a set of financials so that we could actually determine where we are financially. That's not a situation that I'm comfortable with, and I just want to put that out there that, quite frankly, that could happen. So what I have done is I've called some firms recently. I said, look, if we can get, if we can prepare our financials, would you, would you be interested in auditing? And I called two firms, and they both said yes. So it's, I think there's something there. So our plan would be, if we can move forward with this accounting firm, if that gets approved and we engage them, to immediately start an RFP process for a new audit firm. And as I say, we've got two that are in there. This presentation has been posted. I don't necessarily need to go through it all, you know, we want to, mindful of the time, but this explains what the treasurer does today, what department heads do, what the Select Board do. With regard to budget management, that's all staying the same. When you go to the next page, we've pretty much covered that, that. The accounting firm, when we talk about developing a plan, this accounting firm is not just going to keep the books. They will provide financial management services as well. They will actually run a budget process for us. They do this for a number of towns. As a matter of fact, they just picked up two more towns in Maine that are moving to this model. So there are towns in Maine that are doing this. I reached out to a firm in New Hampshire. They're so busy, they can't take any more clients. So it seems to be a trend, especially with smaller towns moving in this direction. What will the accounting firm do? They're going to do the accounts payable disbursements on a regular basis. Those will be sent to the, to the, to the Selectmen for approval before they're actually prepared. They'll perform all the bank reconciliations. That's a key part of internal controls, and we'll have an independent party doing that. They'll prepare interim financial statements, not just year-end. We can get quarterly or as often as we want. They'll give the Select Board and management here a set of financial statements so we can see how we're doing throughout the year. And as I say, they'll assist in budget preparation, they'll help secure loans if we would do that, they'll help us determine what our cash flow needs are so we can feed that into the investment process and make sure that we're investing in a way that will get us access to cash when we need it. And they'll do our capital planning for us as well, picking up on the work from the capital planning. When we think about this extra money, from my perspective, what we need is a financial plan. A financial plan that identifies what the capital needs are, what the potential might be for tax reduction, what other needs may be, and develop a plan that might have a three- or four-year time horizon as to how we're going to take that money and utilize it. And we, from my perspective, that should be a transparent process, should be open to community input, but this accounting firm will help us do that. It's a particular skill set that I think we need and could benefit from. Included in here are all the town treasurer's duties, and they're all listed here. I'll tell you, the treasurer is today and will continue to be a very busy, very busy person. Quite frankly, there are things that are not getting done that need to be done on a regular basis. So I think by bringing this resource in, we'll really sort of fill out that function. I know it's a lot of money, but in the overall scheme of things, I personally think it's money very well spent because it will increase transparency to the town, it will make sure that we're using good, accurate information to make decisions about how to expend our money and how to manage the budget throughout the year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on Article 3? Motion is to adopt the article as written. Leslie? Oops. I'm sorry. Let's let, let's let Mr. Waterhouse go first. He's been waiting patiently.
Not a problem. Can everybody hear me?
Tell us who you are.
Roland Waterhouse, Acton resident. My question, really?
You use the microphone at all.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. People don't usually have a problem hearing me. First question on the hiring the audit firm. How long are we talking about? Is this going to be a yearly contract, a two-year contract, a three-year contract?
Yearly.
Annual contract.
Annual contract, thank you.
Everybody hear the answer? Annual contract.
That answers that question. Microphone. You know, it wasn't put out in the paperwork or anything, so I didn't know how long we were talking about. Initially, I was not in favor of this. However, I see the benefit now that you've made a clearer presentation, Tom. Very good. And I applaud you for your involvement in the process. Second question, and I'm sorry if this is going to offend anybody, what is the current salary of our treasurer?
I don't know. I guess we...
Jennifer, I don't have the exact number.
The treasurer would have it.
Okay.
Do you know what you make a...
I don't, it's 62,4 maybe?
So basically, what we're looking at, and just so that everybody is aware of it, is we're going to be spending about $120,000 to do a job that Michelle Romney was doing at.
Also, the auditing firm was doing it.
No, let's not, let's not, let's not...
Roland, we're getting personal now, so let's...
I'm not trying to get personal at all, sir.
All right.
Could I respond to that, or would you rather?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Roland? I want you to finish.
You blew my train of thought. Go ahead, Tom, respond.
No, 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 I don't want, I don't want you up there then. I want you to finish with your statement.
I'm not, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, you know, prior to, and I'm not knocking this suggestion at all, prior to this suggestion, we had a treasurer who did this job, and I'm not talking about the audit. The accounting firm is not an audit firm. They're an accounting firm, okay? Totally different from the audit firm.
The audit firm?
So we had somebody doing the job at about $46,000 a year.
Okay.
Those are my comments.
Thank you. Tom, do you want to respond?
Kim, did you?
I guess. Or... How am I going to put this? I mean, Michelle did what she needed to do, but as, as Tom just said, the auditing firm right now is doing the accounting. So once we find a new auditing firm, it's, we need somebody to still do that accounting. I really don't feel that, and it's going to be less money because if we get the accounting firm, the accounting firm is going to do the job, and then our auditing firm is probably going to be a lot less because they're not doing everything. Does that make any sense?
Additional comments or questions on Article 3?
May I add to that?
You can add it.
Hang on. Yes, go ahead, Tom.
The treasurer, yeah, thank you. I've been in this job a little, just about a year now, and when I first came on board, I was looking for some, some information. For instance, how are we doing with the budget at this time? Where do we expect to end the year? That information generally was not available. Treasurer at that time and today does a very good job for traditionally what a treasurer does in a town setting. But they have not done financial statements. The budget process, from my perspective, when you have an $850,000 surplus on a $5 million budget, that indicates that the budget needs to be enhanced. There's something wrong there. And by bringing in an outside firm who does this with a number of towns, they can help sharpen the pencil on that to make sure that the budget is set at a level that is appropriate and necessary. At this stage, I, I don't know what adjustments are needed to that process, but I think this firm can help us figure that out, and hopefully we can get to a point where we aren't generating that level of surplus, because as David and Kim have pointed out, it means the taxes are too high. So while there's a cost here, quite frankly, I think we'll get that back many times over. And so I think it's money well spent.
Additional comments or questions? Leslie?
Leslie Berlin. Tom, you just took the words right out of my mouth because $65,000 is short money when we're looking at collecting $800,000 extra in money. That's almost a million dollars that the taxpayers paid that really wasn't needed. And I think that we should be hiring this. I wholeheartedly support hiring this auditing, this, I'm sorry, accounting firm. One of my questions is, why doesn't the treasurer do the financials?
Can anybody answer?
And I know that this has been a long, ongoing thing where they traditionally have not done them, and my question is, why, why isn't that happening?
Good question. Can anybody answer the question?
I can only say that, Acton is not alone here. This is, that's why RH Smith has this business model where they get paid to prepare the statements and audit them, because towns, their treasurers are hired, a treasury job is different than an accounting job. Our treasurers have some accounting skills, but they are not accountants. They are performing treasury functions and some accounting services. So if you were to hire, you know, someone with a combination of those skills, it would probably cost, I know it would cost substantially more than what our current treasurer salary is. It just would. It just would.
You're looking at over six figures.
I think you're, you know, I think you're looking at six figures.
Which is probably about what we'd be spending between our treasurer now and hiring the accounting firm. So I think it's a good thing, you know, for the simple fact that, you know, we'll get, you know, someone with the budgeting experience that we need so we can get our budget. So you're, you know, you budget what you need and not, you know, guessing what you think you're going to need and then overbudgeting because you always want to be played on the safe side.
Additional comments or questions on Article 3? Yes, ma'am. Tell us who you are, please.
Priscilla Lenkowski. Would you just clarify, please? Was there an RFP set out to engage this firm or just phone calls made and you found somebody?
Good question. RFP or not yet? We aren't there yet, probably.
There was not an RFP. There was an RFP for audit services. And I called a number of firms and came across this one firm that used to do audits. They actually have an arm that still does audits, but they created this unit to do this. To the best of my, it's the only one I've found in Maine. I did find one located in Portsmouth that offered municipal accounting services, but they, they had no room to take on additional clients. So before we finally sign this, I certainly don't mind looking, but I'll be honest, I've looked. I can't find anyone that has the capability that this firm has.
But we have, just to clarify, you have not put any information out to accounting firms asking any of these firms if they could provide these services. You've simply contacted these people. They said they'll do it for $65,000.
Yeah, ma'am.
And you're willing to hire them.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on Article 3? Dennis.
Dennis Long, Chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee. What this has done is brought out to the forefront what I've been talking about for years, the town having too much money in the unassigned fund balance. And hiring this firm is going to do several things for the taxpayer. Hopefully, the way we've been doing business, for example, is we have quite a few accounts that we roll money over every year into whether they're spent or not. Probably the biggest dollar amount out of any of them probably is the roads. We appropriate so much money every year, and if they don't spend it, it rolls over to the next year and adds to what they have. And what Tom has said is 100% right. The budgeting process that has been used puts us in this position that we're in. And like I said, I've been concerned many years about the increase in this undesignated fund balance. And with Tom's hard work, and Kelly, they brought all this out to the forefront. And I just want to say I appreciate what they've done. And I believe that this company is going to help develop this plan that people are asking about. The revow that's been spoken about a few times tonight, it's nice to have it done, but it's not going to change the amount of money that we're going to need to operate the town. And that's why the tax rate, hopefully, will be adjusted. So that is, in a sense, kind of irrelevant to what we're talking about tonight. Hopefully, by the time August comes, before they set the tax rate again, they'll have some kind of a plan. And whether they give the money back or invest it, whatever they do, hopefully they get some townspeople to give their input before the plan's finalized. And hopefully, we'll all be paying less taxes in the future. Thank you, Tom.
Could I clarify something?
Sure. Tom.
The accounting firm is going to be hired July 1st.
Tom, get the mic over.
Oh, sorry. The accounting firm is going to be hired July 1st. It's going to take them time to just get themselves up to speed. They're not going to have a plan developed by August. I didn't want, I don't want to indicate that. It may take nine months, 12 months to develop that plan as they go through the budget cycle for the next year. That's my sense of how it will work. But I don't want to create the impression that they're going to have a financial plan done in two months. It's not going to happen.
Additional comments or questions on Article 3? Judy.
Same old question. I'm just wondering how this is going to.
Judy, you got to get closer to the mic. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to know how this is going to affect how we do our finances at the school because we have a great process in place down there. And we get monthly, the school committee gets monthly reports about what's in every account, how much we've spent, and how much is left, and so forth. And I'm just wondering, like, will this have any effect on paying our bills or anything like that, or?
Let me try to respond to that.
Okay.
As you know, when I first began to look at this, I came to see you. There is an option where they could provide these services to the school. And as you pointed out, you've got very, you have staff capable of doing what this firm is doing, would do for us. So I envision this being for the municipal budget, having no impact on the school.
Okay.
We've not had any discussions, or is there any desire on my part to do that?
Okay.
Fair enough.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on Article 3? Yes, sir.
We on the Warrant Finance Committee did pass this 5-0. And to me, the reason is that this is, we'd have no real baseline, which is obvious with the budgeting, the excess cash. And this firm can provide that so we can get things, in the long run, straightened out. And since it's only an annual budget or a contract, I mean, with these folks, the risk is pretty, pretty small, right? I mean, if it doesn't work out after one year, they're gone. So it's not a long-term contract we can't get out of. But I think it's definitely a necessity to get some good baseline and start correcting some of these long-term issues with excess taxes and budgeting. So that's why we passed it.
Additional comments or questions on Article 3? See, now, the motion on Article 3 is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of a motion, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article 3 passes as written. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a total of $85,000 from the undesignated fund balance, and period, up to $55,000 will be used to ratify the overdrafts in District 1 and District 2 winter maintenance accounts for fiscal year '22. After the ratification, $1,500 will be placed in District 1 FY '22 winter maintenance account, and $1,500 will be placed in District 2 FY '22 winter maintenance account. Any unexpended funds that either the winter maintenance account as of 6/30/2023 will be returned to the undesignated fund. Is there a motion on Article 4? Dennis.
I make a motion that we approve the Warrant Finance Committee's recommendation.
The recommendation is to approve the article as written. It's been moved and seconded. Who's the second? Thank you, Roland. So the motion on Article 4 is to adopt the article as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 4?
Make a comment.
I can still amend.
Right. Yep.
Mr. Moderator.
Hand up, yes.
Well, yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to the article. So can I do that now?
You can offer an amendment. Let's see if it's germane or not.
Okay. What we'd like to do, seeing we're so far into the season here, I'd like to make an amendment to Article 4 to see if the town will vote and appropriate a total of $48,728.28 to the unsigned.
All right, let's go back on the number. 2729.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight thousand, seven twenty, and then we got.
All I want to do is take that number, play it here, plug that number here, and delete that.
Okay. So you're offering the amendment. Why don't you read it? And when you read it, slow on the numbers, okay?
Okay, I'll go slower on the numbers.
It's on the screen. It's on the next slide.
Oh, it's on the screen. Okay.
Okay. So to appropriate a total of $48,729.28 from the unassigned fund balance up to $48,729.28 will be used to ratify the overdrafts in District 1 and District 2's winter time maintenance accounts for fiscal year '22. And I would like to strike the rest of it.
Okay. So this is essentially what you're proposing is the number that's up here.
This number right here.
Yep.
Is what the overdraft is. We're.
We're going to spend that overdraft as you designated here, District 1, District 2, right? And strike the rest.
Yes.
Okay. You're all set. Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to amend Article 4 to essentially pay those two overdrafts and strike the rest of the amendments. Anybody have any questions on the amendment? Dennis.
The explanation that the Warrant Finance Committee got was the, this was going to be the overdrafts estimated, and they wanted to put X amount of dollars more so we didn't have to do a special warrant article again in cases of some more snow.
We're hoping not.
And we all hope not. But we surely don't know that. And it isn't going to cost us any money as taxpayers doing the article as written because any over, any money that's left in that article at the end of the fiscal year will go back into the unassigned fund balance. So my suggestion is to leave the warrant article as it was, and hopefully, Mr. Winchell's right, and we don't need any more money. But mother nature, it's a gamble. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the proposed amendment? Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment first. So the amendment basically allocates the two top numbers there to District 1, District 2 for a total of 48, 729, 28, eliminates the rest of the article. So unless there's other additional comments or questions, let's vote on the amendment. So all those in favor of that amendment, please raise, what's the matter? Roland?
Are we voting on the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment. Yes. You have additional comments? Come on up.
Now let me do this.
Okay.
So everyone cares.
Yep.
Speak loud.
Are we voting on the amendment as written, or are we voting on the proposed change that Mr. Winchell?
That is the amendment. The amendment is the proposed change that Mr. Winchell outlined, which is.
I just want to be clear. That's all.
Yeah, okay. We're voting on the proposed amendment, which substantially reduces the money on the article to 48, 729, 28. That's what we're voting on. So if we amend this article, and then we go on to pass it, that's essentially what it's going to be. Any other questions? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your blue cards. Hands down. Those opposed? Okay. Let's vote it again. I think it's clearly against. We're going to count it, okay? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your blue card. And keep it up so we can count. Jennifer, are you going to do the whole thing?
I'll go to the side. Kayla goes to the side. I'll go to the left.
Thought we'd save some money.
I have cameras.
Oh, you don't?
I have 20.
14.
20 and 14.
Okay. All those opposed to adopting the amendment, please raise your cards.
I got nine.
14.
Okay. Thirty-four in favor of the amendment, 23 opposed. So the amendment passes. So now we're going to vote on Article 4 as amended. Okay? Does anybody have a question about what we're voting on? Article, what's that?
Didn't we just vote on the amendment?
No, we, now we're going to vote on the article as amended. We voted on the amendment. You vote on the amendment first, and then you vote on the article as amended. Anybody confused about that?
Yes.
All right, Roland, tell me what's your confusion? You amend an article, and then you, after it's amended, we haven't passed the article yet. That's the rule. That's how you do it.
That was my question when I came up here. Are we voting, first of all?
We were voting on the amendment.
As it was originally written?
No.
As it was amended by Mr. Winchell.
Yes, that's what we just passed.
So what we just voted on.
And passed.
To pass the amendment.
Was the amendment.
Passed was Mr. Winchell's.
Amendment.
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 Correct.
To the original article.
Right. Now we're voting on the article as amended.
No.
Yes, as amended. We're voting on the article as it's been changed, amended. Roland? Go sit down. I'll talk to you later.
Yes.
What is, this is the process. That's how you amend an article. That's what we're doing. I'll show you.
You have confused me immensely.
Sorry. I didn't intend to. This is the normal process for amending a motion. Amendment is proposed, is voted on. If it passes, we vote on the amended article. If it doesn't pass, we vote on the original article.
Okay.
Okay. More questions or confusion? We are now voting on Article 4 as amended. And the amendment are those two numbers. Those are the amount of money that's going to be allocated to each road district for a total of, what is it, 48?
Let's read the article for clarification.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a total of 48, 728.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, 28.
And then the numbers, can you go back to the?
Yeah, I just wanted you to read the article.
Oh, I'm reading the article.
Why don't I read it out loud?
Okay.
So they can vote. To see if the town will vote to raise a total of $48,729.28 from the unassigned fund balance up to $48,729.28 will be used to ratify the overdrafts in the District 1 and District 2 winter maintenance account for FY '22, period. As amended.
But the only correction to what Jennifer read, this is an appropriations. So it's an appropriation of what we're doing, which is pretty obvious at this point, I guess. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 4 as amended, please raise your blue cards.
No.
Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article 4 is adopted as amended. I need a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Whoops. Dennis? We're out of articles, Dennis. What do you want to talk about?
This is every two weeks, TV10.
Something very important.
Okay.
And then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to publicly thank Kayla for her time here. She's been a heck of an asset and always very polite and respectful, and she's always dealt with me just fine. So she must have the patience of a goddess or something. But thank you, Kayla.